Yes.
How's it going, Melody?
Yeah, I'm very excited to be around.
Hi. We need to go.
Can you all be a few more comments from the four individuals?
The meeting of the South Hundred and Regional Board of Education is called to order. Adequate notice as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided on December sixth, two thousand twenty-three by posting the notice with the respective clerks in the city of Lambertville, Borough of Stockton, and township of West Ambe, as and advertised in the Hundred and County Democrat and Trenton Times newspaper.
Since the latter, the county's city fair, using all which stands on the nation under our everything is all with justice on.
Jennifer Bachelor?
Here.
Martha Dennis?
Here.
Gina Pachetti? Brian Keis here.
Kevin Kovaleski?
Here.
Michael Strauss?
Here.
Running Todd Marino?
Here.
Jim Gallagher.
So before we start the meeting, we first have to accept the resignation. We received the resignation of Megan Warner, board member from the city of Lambertville. And she's she was on the board for seven years. And we're very grateful for all the work that she did on this board. So in order to accept the resignation, I need a motion.
We need to. Back here.
All right. Give some voice out.
Yes.
Okay. I'll say hi. Hi. And nice. All right, then we will move on to the PTO.
One thing real quick. Um, just again, I wanted to reinforce and thank Megan for all of her service for four for seven years. Um, I did want to say the position is still open, so it closes on September sixth. So for anyone who's interested in the public, you can you see obviously on the agenda the requirements, but you can email a resume and a letter of interest to Andrew Harris. And then we will be interviewing the candidates at our September twenty-second Board of Education meeting in public as we've done in the past. And then the board would go into executive session, come out, and then make a decision though who that individual would be.
I will also make the point that Megan was nineteen when she ran and took the board seat. So it was really pretty impressive. She graduated from South and then almost immediately ran for school board. So she is South Hundred and drawn through.
Meeting twenty-third, right?
Twenty-third, sorry. That's the point.
Wow, no, I'm thinking Monday Night Football, so I was. I'm like, oh, my God, the Eagles play Monday night, so I'm like, but how they play to sixteen? We're good.
We're good. We're good.
We're good.
How do we get that photo?
Yeah.
Went to PTO?
Yeah, me.
Hello, I don't have anything. I've been flying by the seat of my pants all day. Um, Jessica Hartigan, South Hundred and Regional PTO now. Today, we did, we worked with the district and did all of the orientation events, and that was really cool. It was really cool to see all of the kids come together and the new buildings and the elementary school is spectacular. So you guys all did a very wonderful job. So we did snacks for the pre-k at both, ice cream social for the kids at the elementary school, and then we did Rita's Italian Ice for the fifth and sixth graders. And then tomorrow, we'll be putting on the teacher's luncheon for all the staff. So, yeah, it's it's exciting. It's coming together. We finally got our ST five form, like, took forever and ever. They sent it to the wrong address. They never changed the name. It was a whole thing. So that's exciting. We can finally change all of our banking information this week and get the ball rolling. We still need people to come forward to be in the positions in the building. So if you know of anyone at this point, it's going to be like tapping people to do it or asking, begging people to do it. So the elementary school is looking okay, but the middle school and high school definitely we need, we need people to help. So if anyone knows, we'd greatly appreciate it. But we're we're working towards that, and hopefully we can hold elections like the first week of school and and get things moving in the right direction. But so far, so good. Thank you.
I just want to give a big shout out to Jess because, you know, obviously reorganizing like we are and then taking, we hit hard the PTO in the beginning of the year, and she has not said no yet. You might be regretting that, but she literally, like she said, has been running all day long and then feeding all of our staff tomorrow. And then obviously also playing a huge role in the barbecue that's coming up for our seventh and ninth grade students and parents. So we really appreciate, I know, you know, literally Jess was organizing this from Disney and when she was on vacation with her own family. So thank you so much. We do truly appreciate it.
All right. Oh, yeah.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kate Marsinski from LA. Tonight, we've had a busier than usual summer. So it's been great. The board, some of the board members and our new president, Megan Sigus, have met with Mr. Suso, with Miss Lennon, with Miss Caniones, and did just some discussion of objectives that are mutually desired and hopefully achievable. If we can all find the right pathways to accomplish those goals, we really want to do our best this year to aid the curriculum for the benefit of the students, particularly in the areas where our district could really use that boost. In September, with the assistance of Mr. Suso, Megan and I will meet with the fifth and sixth grade teachers and then the seven to twelve teachers to see if we can help them understand our grant writing process a little bit better, to answer any questions, to try to increase awareness for any new staff that may have joined the district, and also to just encourage a dialogue to add to clarity for both sides so that they understand our mission clearly and so that we can support them and help them achieve the curriculum outcomes that they that everybody desires. We also have been planning golf day as we do every summer. So now our lawn signs are being put out, including today, but it's Monday, September thirtieth is the traditional outing with a seven-thirty breakfast and a nine AM start. And then we have a group lesson this year for the first time at eleven-thirty, followed by lunch. And so that'll hopefully help some people who are newer to the soup to the sport come and join us, and it certainly is. It's always just a friendly outing. We also have our family friendly outing, which is Sunday, September twenty-nine. That's three o'clock welcome and some games, four o'clock start, and there's a group lesson for that one as well. That's it for, and those lessons are both very, very low price as a group lesson, and we hope everybody will enjoy that. And we are seeking community support still. We have family sponsorships. We have three levels of corporate or business sponsorship, and we're really trying to get signs on all eighteen holes. And of course, we have our contests and our premier sponsorships available too. So we want to call out to the community. And I would echo what Jess said. We are a small community, and Jess needs board positions. Those are very important to do everything, but I think both organizations need volunteers to help us get everything done. And the more our community is involved, I think, the more we can get done for the kids. So for those who are listening at home, we hope that, you know, we'll see them as we have been throughout throughout the year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, so I am going to address some correspondence that we, the board received. It's on the agenda. I'm not going to go through it. You can look at it on your own, but I was concerned because the information that was shared in the correspondence related to the referendum is not accurate. So I just wanted to provide some clarification on it. First and foremost, understand that, you know, the board, Andrew and I, nobody makes decisions in a vacuum, right? Throughout this entire process with the referendum, we make decisions and we're constantly consulting with our auditor, our bond counsel, and obviously we have strict guidelines that we follow from the state of New Jersey with a budget manual that we have to read each and every year. So we're just not making these decisions on on a whim in reference to types of things related to the referendum. So I just want to clarify. First of all, you know, those will recall that when we received our referendum bonds and our funding in the amount of thirty-three million, four hundred and twelve thousand, we invested that money in what's called an NJARM, and that stands for New Jersey Asset and Rebate Management Program. So it's specifically for investing for local entities, so local governments or school districts. And the theory behind that is, is obviously over the time period for our referendum projects, we would be paying out our contractors for both jobs, but during that time, we could put the money in an investment account and obviously earn interest on that money. And that's exactly what we did throughout the time. The current balance in the NJARM account is actually two million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-five cents, and the board has not used a penny of that for anything related to projects. So again, I want to say that again, the board has not used a penny of any of the interest that we've gained during this time for any projects. It's still in the account. I also want to clarify what that money can be used for, because there were some misconceptions as well in our correspondence. There's two things that that money can be used for. It can either be used to pay down debt service, so in essence, our mortgage, right, of referendum debt, or the money can be labeled as miscellaneous revenue to our budget and then eventually transferred into a capital reserve account to be used for other projects. The board has not decided one way or another what they're going to do with those funds, and it will be something that they'll be discussing in the near future. But again, no decisions have been made on what happened with that interest. Both of these have also been confirmed options with our auditor and our bond counsel again this morning with two phone calls on Zoom that Andrew and I did. So as I've mentioned before, we're not doing these, making these decisions in isolation. There was also concern about the roof that was replaced at the new South Hundred Elementary School, as well as the HVAC system for the gym and the maker space. There were no referendum funds that were used for either one of those projects, and they were not part of the referendum. Each project qualified, which which is called with a ROD grant, all right, and a ROD grant stands for regular oper- operating district grant from the New Jersey School Development Authority. And what that means is we were able to get forty percent back for each one of those projects. So whatever the total cost for the roof was, we were able to get forty percent from the state will apply towards that. And then whatever the cost was for the HVAC, we were able to get forty percent as well from the state for that. But again, no referendum funds were used for either one of those projects. I just wanted to clarify that so everyone has a full understanding of exactly how the process works.
Thank you for that question.
You don't disagree.
Oh.
That's just for the public.
Now, we need, we'll have an approval for the minutes. And this is a voice vote without a need for a motion.
I would send a motion to.
Now, the motion to approve for minutes from last meeting.
So.
This is a voice vote as well.
Who's the second?
Martha. So I'll let's say I. I. Any names? Any extensions? All right.
Yeah. Do we approve both of them at the same time?
We did not have executive session last time. That was a.
Oh, yeah. All right. So it is the busy time of the year, like we get close to the start of the school year. The first thing I just want to reemphasize to everyone, hopefully, if you have not downloaded the Parents Square app, I'm asking that you do that. As of this morning, we had about twenty-seven percent of our parents who've downloaded the app. Hopefully, you've realized over the last couple of weeks, that is going to be a main source of communication for a lot of information that's coming from the district. The advantage of having the app is that you'll have everything in one place, meaning you'll be able to scroll and see every communication that's come out in a variety of different ways and who it's come from. So these are the QR codes, whether, you know, Android or iOS. So and we'll continue to kind of push this at our back-to-school nights, because obviously we'll be using this program for a while for communication, and it'll be really, really important. Eventually, there'll be other features that we introduce that will allow even one-on-one communication with our teaching staff and the ability for our teachers to communicate. So that will kind of be rolled out over the fall, probably more in like closer to November. But in the meantime, if you've not downloaded the app, you know, please do that. And then obviously, you have the ability to set preferences and all kinds of different things on the app as far as when you want to receive things, how you want to receive things, the language that you want to receive things in. So we'll continue to push that, and my my hope is that by our September meeting, that number will be a lot higher than twenty-seven percent. So some important dates are coming up. Our staff returns tomorrow. So tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday are three very busy days that Jane Ellen, our director of curriculum and staff instruction, has spent a lot of time planning with the administrative team. We're going to start out all together in the auditorium as we started last year, where we'll have all staff there and we'll be, you know, recognizing some staff for a variety of different things. We'll be introducing all of our new staff, and then we have a keynote speaker coming in for most of the morning to all staff. We'll see. So we're really excited about everything that we have professional development wise over the next three days. The first day of school is on Tuesday, September third. And just a reminder for our elementary school and then our five-six, we are, you know, calling it middle school on location, right, using the West Anwell School. The times will be the same, so arrival start time is eight-thirty AM and then dismissal time will be three-twenty PM. And then for our high school, seven through twelve, seven fifty-five to two forty-five PM. Late buses will start on Tuesday, September third. So if you have children that are participating, especially right now in after-school athletics, and then obviously, well, once we get rolling, our clubs will start off, but they will start as early as the third, and they will be at five fifteen right in the horseshoe on on the side of the building with the eagle. So our students can take advantage of that. We're excited about this, so this is something new that we're doing this year, seventh and ninth grade families. And I know Jason Miller, our athletic director, sent out probably a week or so ago a Google signup form for parents to register for this. But the goal of this will be from five to six, we want all of our seventh and ninth grade students along with their families to come out and enjoy some food, which the PTO is helping to organize. We're going to be able to eat inside and outside depending upon the weather. And then from. And then from six to seven, our students are going to kind of be going down to the gym area, and we're going to have an activity fair. Where they're going to have tables set up and all the clubs and different opportunities. Um, our athletics, especially winter and spring, since fall has already started. Folks will be down there, advisors, we're hoping some of our students that are part of some of the organizations will be with us as well. And the goal for that hour is to really learn about all the different opportunities that our students have to get involved in in a variety of different things after school. And while they're doing that, we'll be taking the parents into the auditorium. And Principal McKnight and um Ms. Landon will be providing information about some important academic news, specifically a big piece will be about the dual enrollment program. Uh, obviously, information going out. We're going to have a dual enrollment night, which you'll hear later in our curriculum minutes. Um, a Zoom for parents, but we really are pushing hard this incredible program that we're rolling out for students to be able to get college credits with their high school courses, and then there'll be some other things related to the high school as well. So again, if you haven't signed up yet, and you have a seventh grader or a ninth grader, please, please do so, just so we can get a handle on the amount of food. And we're really looking forward to making that an annual tradition. This year, we're doing seventh and ninth, next year, we probably will evolve into just ninth grade, obviously, our five A building is online. And we're really excited about that. And then our back to school night, so for seven twelve on Tuesday, September seventeenth. For our new elementary school on Wednesday, September eighteenth. Um, and that will include the preschool, two classes that are at the elementary school, and then on Thursday, September nineteenth, our fifth and sixth graders, and then the three preschool classrooms that are at West Anwell School, we'll have back to school night, so just kind of put those on your calendar, obviously, they're on the district calendar, and we'll continue to remind you as we get closer. Just a couple of things I want to throw out there, so you know, kudos to Amanda Brown, who took over as our director or coordinator of transportation. Uh, July first, she's done a great job all summer organizing everything for all of our runs. I know she's been answering a lot of questions from parents over the last couple of days since transportation information was posted in encores on Friday, but you know, I'll just again, you know, stress, be patient. Um, you know, in the first week, our drivers are getting used to the runs. Some of the times when you saw them might have been longer than you would have hoped for, meaning the length of time your child would be on the bus. But a lot of that is just an estimate to give us a little bit of wiggle room in the beginning, number one, to get our routes down, number two, to see how many kids are actually going to be on the bus, because even though we have stops for everyone, it doesn't necessarily mean everyone's going to be taking the bus. So obviously, for those that don't, then that speeds up where we're not waiting for folks um to get on the bus. So just kind of be patient with that, when and just a reminder, you know, students should really get the bus stop ten minutes before their time um in the morning, and then for some reason, you know, if your bus time is, you know, seven fifteen and it's seven sixteen, don't leave and go home. Wait, you know, at least ten minutes, especially in the beginning, and it'll probably take a week or so before we really get things down. Um, and again, if you have any questions, you could always reach out to Amanda, she'll get back as soon as possible, and uh we'll work through any challenges that we have. So school construction update, so you know, the last two weeks have been awesome, I mean, we had the ribbon cutting on August fifteenth for the new elementary school. We had an open house on Thursday last week from one to seven that was packed pretty much the entire time, and then we had another open house that was packed Saturday from nine to twelve. Uh, Principal Ken Jonas and I were there on Saturday, there was people coming out the entire time up till till about twelve thirty. So we had community members, all kinds of folks, it was really exciting, and then today, you know, we had your find your find your classroom for all of our elementary kids, and then some ice cream to go along with it. And it was just truly exciting, I couldn't be happier of where we are with the building, we've got nothing but positive responses from folks. The way the building turned out, um, we have a couple of things still left, we have a new sign for out front, which I'm hoping will be installed by the end of this week. By the time school starts, we're still working through some punch list items with our contractor. We still have to do striping in the new elementary logo on the gym floor, which I'm hoping will be done by next Tuesday. And then I also want to mention that, um, and I actually sent something out to all of our elementary parents about this earlier this morning. Just an update, because I know it came up in some of our walkthroughs for the open houses. About, you know, what about the paving for the city lot at the elementary school? So uh what I do want to let you know is that, um, first of all, the lot is owned by the city, we've been working with them, it was always part of our project, it will continue to be part of our project, but there is permitting that we have to go through in order for that to happen. That lot requires pervious paving, so if you've been at the elementary school, you saw the pervious concrete out in front of the building, that's what it will look like in essence, um, in that parking lot. There has to be drainage and piping that goes underneath the lot, and then eventually it'll be paved over top. So we've been working with DNR, um Delaware River Canal Commission for those approvals, but we're not there yet. Um, we're hoping that we'll have that sometime in the fall. And then because of the timing of the project, and because it will probably take about two weeks to pave, based on our estimates from our engineers, more than likely will probably happen in the summer. Because trying to shut that lot down for two weeks during the school year would be a big inconvenience. You know, not only to the school district, but also to the community in large, so. It's still on the radar, it's still happening, I just want to put that out there, because I know folks um have asked about it, and when we do pave that lot, we also stripe it with with parking spots, so. As you know, if you park in that lot, sometimes it's not, um, you know, economical the way people park, and it's not exactly, you know, maximizing parking there, but when we have lines and stripes, we'll be able to maximize it much better, so I just wanted to kind of put that on the radar. And then as far as the middle school, we're making excellent progress. Um, over the last several weeks, there's been a lot of steel that's been erected on the site. So you see this at the gym, and then you kind of just see the site at large, and you can see, you know, a lot of different things with steel, and then the ceiling beams that are going throughout, so we're really excited about the progress that we make, and we're continuing to look at a target completion date of March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five, so the good news is that gives us plenty of time. You know, obviously, the elementary school, it was tight, right, we finished, you know, in July. But you know, trying to turn everything around by the school year was pretty tight, or hopefully, we'll have a little bit more time um to work through some things with the building before we have to actually use it. So everything is is moving really, really well on that project. And then the last thing I want to mention, and we mentioned this at our last meeting, is that preschool will be a hot topic in the fall as far as facility planning for tw- two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six and beyond. Um, I had mentioned at our last meeting that we're going to be holding three community input sessions. Uh, so I wanted to give the dates here, these are actually the Zoom links that have already been set. So they'll all be via Zoom, they'll be recorded, and the goal of these meetings is that Andrew and I, um, and Dr. Naismith, who in charge of our preschool program, will be presenting to the community different options to consider, um, with those options, the educational pros and cons, as well as the fiscal impact. And we're looking for impact from the community to kind of see where we go, and based on that information, it will go back to the board. And then the board is going to have to do some decision making later in the fall, early winter. As far as how we're going to plan accordingly over the next several years, and what the preschool program is going to look like. So I'll be sending these out, reminding parents, they'll be on our um calendar that's available on our websites. Um, but I kind of just wanted to put them out there again, so everyone keeps it in the back of their mind and can save the dates as we get closer, especially to September twenty-fourth. That is my opinion, is there any questions from the board on anything I shared before?
Did they they just move out that parking lot?
Yes, they fill the hole.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Just a quick comment as having witnessed this sprint to the finish, um, I I want to just say thank you to both you and to our teachers who, having visited both for the ribbon cutting and then also with my kids at the new elementary school and watching everyone working and bringing in family and friends to work, it's really just extraordinary, and it it's very much appreciated, so that when we open on September third, they, everybody's going to be ready and excited about that building.
Yeah, and I said this at the uh ribbon cutting, and I'll repeat it, you know, that building, as great as it is, it's about the people that are going to be inside of it. Um, and the wonderful things they're going to do with our kids. And then the other thing is, and I reiterated this at the ribbon cutting about, you know, our facility staff, this has been a tough summer, and technology events as well, losing around somewhere. Um, there's a lot of moving parts to make all that happen, and they've, you know, many of them have worked seven days a week, literally, since the end of the school year. So, uh, you know, huge kudos to them and thank you, and you know, I think they'll just kind of breathe a sigh of relief when September third comes around. Try to settle back into their normal schedule, because it's been a lot.
I did want to add one thing in in your discussion about the parking lot, I know that we work with Go Hundredan as the main group in Hundredan County that does pedestrian safety. And you had a video regarding pickup and drop off, I think that's important to.
Yeah, and so, and I'll continue, I'll warn you ahead of time, you're going to get a text message on Labor Day. Um, the day of course, school was already scheduled to go out, but just a reminder, that video is really, really important to watch, because we have changed drop off procedures and pickup procedures, we've separated parents from buses um for safety reasons, and as um you know, we we just talked about Ryan Fisher from Go Hundred and came out on site several times. Uh, and really took a look at the site, made recommendations, and approved everything we're doing as far as you know, the safety of it for our kids and for our parents and for our students who are taking the bus. So if you haven't, um, again, I don't encourage, we really want kids to take the bus. You know, you you recall probably, and folks that have been paying attention to our meetings. We've had parents several times over the last year talk about um living across the other side of one seventy-nine, and up to this point, we had never provided transportation for those students in theory, because it was within two miles of, you know, the old LPS school, but we are now, so we are providing transportation, because to me expecting anyone to walk across one seventy-nine, even what across the wall is ludicrous, so. Amanda did a great job looking at that early on when she took over. And we are being able to provide that transportation for those folks, so. Use it, because the less cars that we have on the site, the smoother things will go, so obviously, if your child has access to a bus, and that's really for all of our schools here as well, as well as at West Anwell, like, if you have a bus, take it. And you know, reduce the amount of traffic that will be on all three sites. So thanks for reminding.
All right, we will open the first period of public comments. Anyone who has anything to say, ask that you come to the podium, state your name and your municipality, and keep your questions to under three minutes. No questions coming in, anything on?
There is not.
All right, um, then I will close the the first period of public comments, and we will move on to the committee. The committee meeting, so buildings, grounds, transportation, finance and safety.
Uh, so Mr. Suzo provided some general updates about future projects that will be discussed, the upcoming board retreat. He also provided similar updates to what he just did in his superintendent update about the status of construction at the Southern Elementary and South Hundred and Middle School. Um, we discussed the RFP process for adding solar panels to all three um built uh district buildings, the elementary school, uh, the future middle school, and then the high school. Um, we reviewed contracts, there's a number of contracts for out of district placements this month, those contracts confidential remain in the business office. Uh, other contracts to highlight easy routing, which is a routing software which we just discussed. Uh, security for some additional work needed at the elementary school and efficiency, which is used to help schedule flex classes at the high school. Um, additionally, we discussed going transportation agreements with Delaware Valley Regional, uh, doing township and travel schools that are for approval. Uh, memory of understanding um for to support STEM instruction. Approval of fund transfer to cover construction payments. Uh, a zero dollar change order for the middle school. On New Jersey Arm interest updates. We talked about all the routes uh for this year for transportation. Uh, that bus inspections were complete. Um, we continue to look at the feasibility of the clean school bus grant that we were awarded. Uh, more information coming at the September committee meeting. Uh, we discussed the need for the district to purchase a new van or SEV that we budgeted for in this year's budget. Uh, we discussed the elementary school kitchen pass and inspection. The installation of bus cameras in our new bus twenty-five. And the plan to purchase two-way radios for the buses to improve communication with the drivers and increase safety.
I understand we need a motion to approve items A through six, A through S. We have a motion. So wait. In a second. Any discussion?
Could could we maybe um run through a little bit of the background on uh the solar panels and what precipitated what we need to add the, it's a, someone who's really just.
So what we originally, um, I think we're looking to build the buildings, the discussion at the time with the board was to add solar panels to offset some of the costs, um, the electricity costs and things like that. Um, so we just continue to look at that and, you know, see, we put it on pause originally because of the delay of the middle school. Um, because most companies want to do all three projects at the same time. Um, so that's why we're just still in the initial phases of figuring out uh the RFP and then going through that. I would hope that, you know, by the time all the buildings are completed, then we'll be able to go out for the project.
I just wanted to um kind of touch on the the at the meeting the other night, when we, when it came up, and I went, oh, we already have solar panels, so I wanted to make sure that that was uh addressed, in case anybody else would have the same question and and what we had talked about.
Yeah, we don't, we don't own the solar field, so these would be not necessarily owned by the district, they would be district, uh, depending on the way that we went, whether we want to put on purchasing agreement, or we went with owning to solar mountain, they would be the districts.
And there would be savings, you you mentioned like savings.
Yeah, again, I don't want to put numbers out there, because again, those numbers change quickly, but um, based on initial discussions that look like significant savings compared to what were the current agreement that we have with our purchasing agreement. And then obviously, much bigger savings than what we get from JCT now. Um, the initial projections is that the panels wouldn't cover all of our electricity needs. Um, but they were anywhere in the range of sixty to seventy percent.
You have a discussion? We need to move on to personnel?
We need to.
All right, so that's a roll call.
Uh, starting with Jennifer Batcher.
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Gina Fashetti?
Yes.
Brian Keats?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Ronnie Tomlin?
Right, now personnel.
I'm going to do personnel. So at our personnel meeting, we talked about just where we are with current staffing, and you'll notice on the agenda, we have some final hires to kind of finish up the year. Uh, one position that we do have open right now, uh, unfortunately, we lost one of our instructional coaches, Melissa Campbell, who was a great addition to us two years ago, Melissa got hired as an administrator. Actually, uh, in the Mississauga School District, she's now going to be their supervisor of science and math. So we do have that position posted, uh, and we will be looking to fill that, uh, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Um, and then we spent a lot of time just looking at, uh, la- last week, we had our new teacher training orientation. So for all of our new folks, it was four full days, Monday to Thursday, uh, where they got a variety of different uh professional development. Uh, and they also had some time to do a lot of team building as well, which we felt was really, really important for our business app, so. Uh, thanks to Jane Ellen for organizing an excellent week. And then we also took a look at our PD for this week, as I mentioned before, that will start tomorrow morning.
I want you to motion to approve items A and B.
So moved.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Starting with Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Gina Fashetti?
Yes.
Brian Keats?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Jen Batcher?
Yes. Yes.
Right, next is curriculum and technology.
So the curriculum and technology committee met on August fourteen at six PM. Um, the technology update, Tony already covered, the superintendent updates, our course has been launched. The initial email went out several weeks ago, proper parents to register followed by a couple emails, subsequent email after that reminders. Sounds of not harming teachers, student schedules and bus information is available on our course. And as Tony also said, a new communication platform, Passakers, is also lo- is also launched. Of two things to approve tonight, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five mentoring plan. And some curriculum. Uh, so our teachers spent a lot of time this summer developing curriculum on on their own, and as part of this with their preparation, perhaps within the next year, my understanding is, these could be involved with the dual enrollment of an opportunity for students. So do I, I can look through the rest of my notes, and I can go back and just say what is what. So the dual enrollment program parent meeting will be some among that. Sun among that will be September ninth, right, seven P M. It'll be a virtual meeting and I believe you said in your. Update that that will be, and email will be going out. And moving forward for, you know, for transparency. Jane Allen, the director of curriculum, will be presenting quarterly, this quarterly updates, quarterly presentations on student assessment data. Will also receive monthly curriculum updates. And also be curriculum focus group for parents and a curriculum council for teachers. So in addition to the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five mentoring plan that you will approve tonight. The following curriculum are also approved for all. It is a photography and graphic design. Three D studio art. A P advanced two D photography and digital imaging. And outside most three art will be anatomy and physiology. And that's all I think. Motion or prove A B.
So moved. You might need discussion on that. So these will be brand new classes that we don't currently offer those.
No, yeah, anatomy physiology, I think is a re up update, correct?
Oh.
Starting with Gina Feshi?
Yes.
Brian Keats?
Yes.
Kevin Kowaleski?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Jennifer Bachelor?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Ronnie Tomlin?
Yes.
We met the policy committee met on August seventh, the Zoom, we have three items for the first read. Uh, policy five five three zero, which is suicide prevention, which adds additional training requirements, focusing on additional staff members. We did discuss the current training, uh. The district provides training to all staff annually, but there's also training that includes for new joiners if they missed the annual training. So everybody is covered. We also discussed that the district has a continuing care, including staff on site who make assessments. You can access the mobile response unit. We have the form here for further assessments and recommendations. And a protocol for return to school, which includes helping families locate providers if they're having any difficulty with that. And this is a mandated change. The second item in first read is a policy eighty four twenty on emergency and crisis situations. This is focused on making sure that student with special, students with special needs. Are integrated as much as possible into the emergency and crisis drills. And it requires that there be a written plan detailing any modifications in their five or four, their I H P. Um, I can confirm that we're doing that today already, but mandated change that also is being implemented. And then lastly, the policy, uh, eighty four sixty seven and the related regulation. For firearms, uh, weapons and firearms, this is not. As a result of any sort of a change on the legislative level. But it is additional detail related to this area regarding student possession and use of firearms in school. And the protocol associated with that and again, a man but with change. So those are the items for the first read. Any questions on those three? On the second read, uh, going back over policy fifty seven fifty on equitable education opportunity, just as a reminder. Um, this is just really a movement. It's a, the school curriculum will cover multicultural education and content. Any references to African American history and the Holocaust have not been removed, but they've just been moved to a different section. Well, policy fifty seven fifty five, equity in educational programs and services, this was a college, so that's just being removed. Policy twenty two sixty, equity in school classroom practices, this was a reallocation of information to different sections. And the related regulation was just a change in the case of a complaint procedure. The last item for our second read is policy twenty four thirty one point four and the related regulation. Uh, as to prevention and treatment of sports related concussions and head injuries, which we talked a little bit about at our last meeting. That has been rewritten to align to new guidance and we did, uh, uh. The superintendent reached out to check on our approach to concussions. We do have a training program. We. Track the concessions that occur every year. Um, and also use video cameras in the gym to make sure that we're recording these items for training purposes and otherwise. So I'd like to move those items for second reading to. Any further discussion? You'll move on to school and community. Oh, so sorry.
Well, starting with, uh, Brian Bees.
Yes.
Kevin Kowaleski?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Jennifer Bachelor?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Jennifer Feshi?
Yeah.
Ronnie Tomlin?
Yeah.
All right, school and community met on August twentieth. We discussed what we keep talking about, the, um, parent square rollout. Um, at that point, we have twenty five percent. So that was a week ago. So we've only had two percent in the past week. We'd like to bring that number up. Um, and as a reminder, parent squares really intended to replace messenger, messenger health, you know, just didn't have the capabilities that parent square does. Um, we talked about how convenient parent square has already pro- proven to be where just. Finding, um, information is just significantly simpler. Um, and again, the goal is for that to replace other communication tools once people become more familiar with it. Um, we talked about start of year communications, again, things that that Tony went through. Um, and the open houses and I, again, I attended, um. The one, the the open house on Thursday and it's just. Absolutely amazing and costumes are fantastic, especially those kindergarten classrooms. Um, because the kindergarten camp was already, so it's really just, um, a wonderful thing to see. And people have expressed a lot of enthusiasm, so. And then we talked about all of the events that are happening to welcome back students and all the work that the P T O is doing. The lunch for the teachers and also, um, because the kids, the school will all have new logos. Um, there's items that will be provided to some of the kids that to celebrate those new schools, the new logos. And the P T O has put together a, a website for, um, people to purchase. Items with the new school logos. Um, still a lot of discussion about the, the little eagle isn't how everybody wants, wants something without them. Um, and then at the high school this year, there will also be a school store run by students as a part of the special education program. And there that'll be after school where kids can buy snacks before sports and clubs. Um, and then there will also be items there for sale with the school logo on it. And we talked about how this year as another piece of the welcome, um, back is the, um, the camp fair view trip. Which normally is March over, has been pushed up to September to give the fifth and sixth and fifth and full. Fifth and sixth grade classes will be going to give more of an opportunity for that social interaction.
And next month at our board meeting, I'm hoping we'll take a minute to look at the school store. Um, from everyone, whoever's here in attendance, um, and then the board as well. And then there is also someone, and I won't share who yet. That I would like to recognize for some of the things they've given us for the. School store above and beyond. So my hope is to have that individual at the board meeting as well.
Nothing to move for school and community. Um, we have the procedural acceptance of the harassment, intimidation and bullying report. And the fire drills and safe and safety drills. Neither of those require a vote.
No votes tonight.
So we will open the, uh, second period of public comment. Again. Come to the podium, state your name and your name is valid.
Andrea Little. West Hamwell. Welcome to the new school year. In less than one year, the West Ham well elements will be vacant. What steps are the administrative team taking now to prepare? For evaluation and sale of the property, including the house? Has a realtor been retained? What is the process in place? And when can the public expect to hear the development of the sale from the administration? The sale was said. To be a give back to the community to mitigate the tax burden of the referendum to the taxpayers. There hasn't been anything done as far as other than we originally had an evaluation of the building, which was. Probably about three years ago before we started the referendum process, but obviously there'll be conversations in the, in the coming months and, uh. You know, eventually the board is going to have to make a decision on, you know, the future of that building.
Still need it for another year.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, still here for, still here for a whole nother year at least, so.
I will end the second period of public comment. We have no need to go into the executive session, so may I have a motion to adjourn? So. Thank you very much. Have a great night. Have a great start of the school year.